Just over ten years ago now. And I was working in Nepal, which as you know is a little country in South Asia, talking to young people a bit like you about their problems. And they said, we know what our problems are and we know what the solutions are. The problem is there's nobody helping us develop those solutions. There's lots of big people in government who say things and then never do them. There's lots of donors that have lots of money, but we can't work with them because we don't have access and we don't have institutions. But we know what the problems are, and the problems are accountability problems. There is a lack of drinking water, there is a lack of education, there is a lack of healthcare. But if you take those problems up a level, actually the biggest core problem is a lack of accountability. Because money is going missing or communities are not being consulted about what it is that they want. So we need an organisation that can help us develop our ideas and find our voices and advocate for our rights. And I thought, hmm, that's really interesting. I wonder if there's an organisation that does that? So I began to look for organisations that do that. And they do exist, you know, there are other organisations that do these kinds of things. But it didn't seem like they were doing them in the right kinds of ways. They weren't meeting young people like you where you are, in ways that you understand, and supporting you to develop your own ideas. They were either trying to push their ideas, or they were using the wrong language, or they were using the wrong media. And that's where the Accountability Lab began to take shape. And so when I got back from, I was working for a different organisation, I got back on my trip. And I thought, I'm going to resign and then see if we could set up a little lab that could help young people to develop their ideas. And we'll give it a few months, we'll see what happens. And if it doesn't work, then at least we've tried. So that's what happened, and it grew from there. And we started with what is now our incubator process, really informally, just talking to young people and saying, do you have a good idea? Maybe we can brainstorm, see if we could help you, maybe we can crowdfund and try and find you some money, or whatever the resources are that you need to develop your idea. And slowly that grew into a formal programme in Nepal. And then there were some young people in Liberia who said, well, that's an amazing idea. We'd like to do that in Liberia. So then they started doing it there, and that was nine years ago. And then it's slowly grown, and now we're in thirteen countries. And Zimbabwe is now two years old, as you know, and growing quickly. And it's incredible to see the community that we've built already through programmes like the incubator. And then we realised that actually we needed to work more with government. It's all very well for us to criticise government and say the government is doing things wrong. And they probably are, in most places. But as we know, there are always good people within government. And we were watching a talent show on TV in Nepal one night. And suddenly we thought, what if we developed a TV show that isn't about people that can sing or dance, but people in government that have integrity? And that's where Integrity Icon came from, and I think you might know about that campaign as well. So now that's in its second year here in Zimbabwe. In other countries, Nepal, Liberia, it's been going for almost ten years. And we realised quickly that there's something really important about what we call naming and faming, celebrating people, lifting people up who are doing good things. Because so much of our lives, and I know this is the case in Zimbabwe, become negative because there are so many challenges. The government might not work properly, there might be, you know, all sorts of service delivery problems. There's corruption, there's politics. And it can be very easy to get beaten down by that. But there's a way to flip that narrative and build hope and encourage ourselves and other people that things can change by naming and faming, by catching people doing the right thing rather than the wrong thing. Because that is really inspirational. And our icons in other countries have gone on to do some amazing things because of the trust and credibility that the campaign has created for them. There's an icon in Mali who, before he became an icon, was working in the Ministry of Justice and afterwards was promoted to be the Minister of Justice. And when he was made the minister, they said it's because he was an integrity icon. We realised he was a man of deep integrity and we want someone in that position in our Ministry of Justice. There have been, there was an icon in Pakistan who, the day after he won, he got a call from the Chief Minister, who's the sort of governor of one of the provinces, and was offered any job that he wanted in the province. So we'll see what happens with our icons here. But what we realised is that this process of lifting people up and celebrating the good rather than the bad is essential. And it's the same for all of you. I think we're trying our best to tell your stories in positive ways, to help you expand your networks and your ideas, to solve problems, not just to complain about problems, and I think that's really important. So the Accountability Lab grew from there. And then we realised that the arts were a pretty important way of engaging young people, of course. Film, music, technology and other creative spaces are ways to to build new narratives and also build connections and ideas that are very different to the old ways of doing developments and trying to create political change. Part of the problem, I think, with the way that development happens generally is it's very focused on organisations and institutions and the idea that if we can just build an anti-corruption commission, for example, then that commission will solve corruption. But we all know that that isn't the case. We need to broaden this movement and bring in all sorts of different kinds of people, just like yourselves. And that's where the arts are incredible, because we can build different narratives and tell different stories and reach different people in different ways. And that is a lot of what you are doing and what is so important, I think, to building accountability everywhere, not just in Zimbabwe. So the Accountability Lab grew from there. And now we're doing a lot of work at the international level as well to try and influence policy processes and change the way that governments all around the world interact with their citizens. And so what I thought I would do quickly, and then I would love for this to be more of a conversation, is to tell you my top ten lessons from our ten years of the Accountability Lab. And I've touched on a few of them already. The first was about this idea of building positive narratives. And I would encourage you in your work, when there's so much that might look like it's going wrong, to try and focus even on the small things that seem like they're going right and try and expand those things. Because if we focus on all of the things that are going wrong, we can quickly become disheartened and it can be difficult work. So let's all try and stay as positive as we can. I mentioned creative entry points, and all of you are, in your own ways, being extremely creative in what you're doing, not just in what you're doing, but also how you're doing it. And I wish we had time to come and see each of you working in your spaces and with your communities. We did have the chance, because I was in Victoria Falls last week, to go and visit one of our film fellows near there called Scar, who's doing some really interesting work with her film. And I can see how these kinds of mediums resonate with communities and the ways that we can build trust with people to build accountability using film, using music, using all sorts of other creative approaches. One of my favourite accountrepreneurs in the whole world is a man, a citizen journalist in Liberia called Alfred, who has a chalk billboard on the side of the road. It's not, you know, a big billboard that is printed. It's a chalk board on the side of a very busy road in the capital city. And every day he writes up the news, but in ways, in local languages and in ways that people understand, and with lots of visuals and pictures. And every day, hundreds of people stop and they look at the board and they talk to him about the news and they engage in conversation because they can't necessarily afford to buy newspapers or they're not necessarily able to read too well, and this is how they get their news. So it's a public information service and is incredibly creative and is doing all sorts of very interesting things to build public awareness in Liberia. And so these kinds of approaches, the sorts of things that you're developing through the incubator or that you're supporting through your music and your films, are absolutely essential to changing the way that people understand their realities and how they engage with each other and with people in power. The third lesson, I think, is around this point I mentioned, that it can't just be about compliance. I think that the way to build accountability is not through trying to force people to comply with rules, although of course there needs to be some degree of enforcement of rules. It's about persuading them that following the rules is in their own interests, which means it's more about influencing behaviours and really talking and thinking about values and what it means to each of us to be a responsible person and to do the right thing. And that's why a lot of our training isn't just technical. It's also about values and about ethics and about how we understand the role that we individually can play in the world and in our communities. The fourth lesson is about how to build what we call insider-outsider coalitions. By that we mean coalitions and relationships between people like you who are doing amazing things outside government and people inside government who also might want to do the right thing. Our integrity icons are some of those kinds of people, but there are many others. And I would love to hear from you how you think that process can happen. But, for example, one way that we've been trying to support it in Nepal now is through an integrity fellowship, where young people go and serve as fellows with our integrity icons to learn from them, to see what it means to be a person of integrity within government. And what we've seen when we talk to those young people is that afterwards they are much more willing to join government. They are much more enthused and enthusiastic about the idea of choosing government as a career path. And then they realise that it's possible to be part of government and still maintain their personal integrity. And they are the kind of people, of course, because they are young and they're part of our network and they're dynamic, that when they are in government are much more likely to work with people like you to try and answer problems or solve challenges or find ways to integrate some of what you're doing or some of your information into the decisions that they make. So there are ways that we can do this, and it's all part of what we're thinking about. The fifth lesson is around aligning incentives. And we had a really interesting discussion earlier with some of our partners on our civic action teams programme that touched on this. And I don't know if there's any of them here today or any of our community frontline associates. But I think what they're managing to do is find ways in communities to move away from the conflictual approaches where it's constantly pointing at people who are not doing the right thing and shouting for change and saying, how can we co-create? And how can we jointly develop solutions to the problems that we face? And how can we build a shared sense of understanding and of information that will allow us to move forward together? So it's exciting to see it happening here. And again, I would encourage all of us to connect with our community frontline associates and our civic action team partners to see if there's ways that we can also help promote your work through their efforts, whether it's sharing one of your films in a community or playing one of the songs or if there's an accountpreneur working on a specific issue that would be relevant for those communities. Let's see if we can connect the dots, because you're not working in isolation. It might feel like you are on a day-to-day basis, but this room indicates, hopefully, that you're not. Everything you're doing is part of this network and it's part of the larger change that can happen if we find the right points at which we can support each other. The sixth lesson is around more coherently supporting reformers within government in different ways. And we've been doing a lot of work, for example, with the civil service training academies in other countries and really trying to train young people going into government to think differently, to respond to citizens, to solve problems. And I would encourage all of us, again, to see if that's something we can think about doing here, if there are ways that we can perhaps partner with the Public Service Commission here to see how we can encourage them to be a bit more responsive and to support young people who are working on the inside so that we can again build these insider-outsider coalitions. The seventh lesson, I think, is about trust. And trust is a big word and can mean lots of different things. But I hope part of what we are doing with you is build a trusted community where we can be open and honest and provide feedback in ways that allows everybody to improve what they do. Trust is essential to moving forwards. And we have to find new ways to build trust. And part of trust building, I would argue, is saying what you're going to do and then doing it and then saying that you've done it, which sounds easy, but it's not what a lot of people do. Either they don't do what they say they want to do or don't do, or they do it and then they don't report back and tell you that they've done it. So there isn't the feedback loop that is needed to slowly build trust. And trust comes through repeated interactions. As humans, I think we need to know that someone is going to come back in order to agree, to engage with them in any meaningful way. And so what we're trying to do, and this is part of that, is help to create this sense of understanding that we are here, we're trying to help, we are supporting you. And also, I hope that you're doing that together. And that's why the point that Upen you made is so important at the beginning, that you connecting with each other tonight is just as important as us connecting with you. Because I think if we can build those relationships of trust between and among each other, it will build a fabric that will allow us all to move in the directions that we might like to go. The eighth lesson is about making things relevant. Often accountability can be quite nebulous, it can be quite difficult to understand. It can mean a lot of different things to different people. And what I love about the work that all of you are doing is that you're making it relevant for people because you're making it specific to your communities and to issues like education or health or gender-based violence or drug use or many of the other things that affect the communities in which you live. And that's really important because it allows us to bring other people in and for them to understand how important all of this is. Ninth, again, what we're doing this evening is building unlikely networks. What we mean by unlikely networks is different kinds of people from different walks of life who can come together and collaborate. And a lot of the accountability governance work tends to be amongst small groups of people and politicians in boardrooms and not about people like you who are out there doing important work to build trust and to make change. And we want to crowd in as many of you as we possibly can. At the moment, you know, our programmes are bringing in a certain number every year. But as the network grows and as you become alumni of those programmes and more and more come in after you, we can build several hundred people over the course of the next several years that are in one way or another part of this unlikely network. And suddenly that becomes really, really powerful, doesn't it? Because it's very hard for one person to say, I want to do things differently. But if there are hundreds who are all saying, we all want to do things differently and actually we're the ones that can make the change that we're talking about, that suddenly becomes extremely important and a constituency that is hard for people in power to ignore. And then finally, and this is related, is that what we're trying to do here is build an ecosystem. Each of us individually can't make the change that we want to see, but together if we find collaborations, we find connection points between our organisations, if we're not jealous, if we celebrate other people, if we take the blame when things go wrong, but provide credit to others when things go right, then we can lift each other up and build the kind of systems that we want and that will function to make the world a better place. So I don't want to talk for any longer because I think you probably have lots of very interesting points and questions. Like I said, please be open and honest. We as an organisation are a learning organisation and would love to know how to improve what we do and support you in the ways that you need more effectively. So let us know how we can do that. And finally, just to say that you shouldn't ever doubt the power of yourself and of your ideas to create change. It is difficult sometimes to see that change happening because it can take a long time. And it's not always linear, it doesn't happen like this. It's exact, and some days it feels depressing and like nothing is working. But then there will be days and there will be moments where it feels like you've hit that sweet spot where things are perhaps happening or someone has said something nice about your film or someone has listened to your song and shared it. And suddenly there's a bit of impact or there's a change that you're seeing. And it might seem small, but it can represent something extremely large. And it can take time. But maybe in ten years, when we're sitting here and we're talking about twenty lessons from twenty years of building accountability, there will be some really important impacts in there that you have created. So you are really what makes the Accountability Lab what it is. And again, it's such a pleasure and an honour to be able to talk to you. And I'd love to answer any questions. Thank you.
So I'm going to try and experiment because we want to have a conversation right. So I want you to know that we can actually talk to each other without, sorry, we have one microphone. So without too much back and forth. So can everybody hear me in the back? Yes. Okay, awesome. Right, so let's do some housekeeping and then we'll get started. We have ablution facilities in the garden, is that correct? And then behind this house here, behind the garage, okay? So everybody's feeling safe about what's happening. Okay, good. So let's talk. Who has something to respond back, to say back? Yes, you see, that's why we picked you guys. Go ahead, say something back.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. It's a great honour to meet you in person. I'm sure that everybody here feels excited about that. My name is Mary Mundeja. I'm one of the CSF film fellowship cohort. I'm part of the CSF film fellowship cohort. And last year I got an opportunity to be part of the guys who did KKK as far as the livelihoods, among other things, in regards to the integrity icons, the guys who were nominated last year. And I'm a journalist by profession and it really made me have an understanding of the importance of reporting on the positive, no matter how little it is. And it was really a memorable experience in regards to digging deep into people's lives, finding out what they do and seeing how appreciative the communities they serve are in regards of their service, as much as their civil servants. It's really hectic this side, the service is not all that. And there's a lot of negativity as far as civil servants are concerned. They are frustrated and they tend to take their frustration on whoever they serve. So it was really an enlightening process for me, which made me be able to, not be able, feel motivated to apply for the film fellowship because I used to do documentaries before. And I really got excited when I was selected as part of the cohort. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to be able to learn, to push positivity even in the littlest way and hoping that whatever that we do will make an impact in a bigger or lesser way.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Blair, for the presentation. My name is Rose Lily Osho Kunsay and I am part of the second cohort, Accountpreneur. I just wanted to find out from you, since you've been working in these thirteen countries, how has been your experience regarding accountability work, particularly in countries like Zimbabwe where the civic space is very constricted and is shrinking every day? How has been the experience and what strategies can we employ going forward considering that we still have the same problem of the shrinking civic space? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Mary, so nice to have you as part of the film fellowship. And we were at Macumber earlier talking to them, I think. Maybe they might be here too, but they're doing amazing work. And I know you guys just did your training, was it last week in Peru? And that sounded really exciting. And I'm really looking forward to seeing your films. The film fellowship is something that has grown in other countries as well and we're seeing some really great engagement now. There was a, we've been working on a film fellowship for women in Mali. And one of the participants, her film recently went to the Cannes Film Festival. She was a first-time filmmaker from northern Mali. And it's, you know, those sorts of things are beginning to happen now. So we know what a powerful medium it is and we will help as much as we can to get your films out to where they need to go. So that's really exciting. And then, Rose Lily, thanks for your question. I know things are really difficult. I think there's a few tactics that we've learned generally that are useful. One is being positive, as we've discussed. It's hard for people to push back too much when all you're saying is nice things. If you're pointing fingers, then, you know, it can be more difficult. So we definitely take that approach. Secondly, we try, as I talked about, build relationships within government as much as we can. That doesn't stop this from happening, but it might help us manoeuvre, it might help us understand what's happening a bit better. And then particularly at the local level, I think, there might be more room for manoeuvre. Even if things are shrinking nationally, there is always a Even if things are shrinking nationally, there is always a space or there's always a person or there's always a little moment at a local level where there might be room to do things, to create some change. The challenge is finding those little spaces, I think, and trying to work within them creatively. We could talk maybe afterwards about specific tactics in Zimbabwe. I think my colleagues have more to say about that. I'm not as familiar at this point with everything that's happening here. But I also think that broadly, part of what we're doing in terms of your work, bringing in the arts, bringing in cultural approaches, bringing in things that are not necessarily quite as directly political as whatever it might be rallies in the streets or, you know, vote putting reformers into elections and that kind of thing, is, while all of the other things are important perhaps, it's still, it's a bit more indirect. You might find smaller spaces or parts of the system where we might be able to push a little bit. But finally, I think I would say just don't lose hope. I know things might seem like they're perhaps moving in the wrong direction. It won't go on forever. At some point, you know, things will shift. There will be opportunities. And all of this groundwork that you are doing to build your networks, to develop ideas, to create your skills, there will suddenly be a space for them to grow and amplify. And we've got to be ready for that moment.
Thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. Very challenging in a good way. I'd like to ask, my name is Simba Rashid, Simba. I'm from the 2022 group of accountants. So my question is, considering that you yourself would consider yourself the chief incubator, you started an idea at a very tender age. And within the context that you exist in, that is a lot of intergenerational inequalities. What challenges or what major challenge did you face as a startup, as someone who is starting something new, a huge initiative similar to what we are doing? What major challenges did you face, particularly challenges that have to do with the intergenerational conflict that happens and the context that we also exist in? So I think maybe getting a few of what kind of major challenges you faced would also be helpful for smaller startups that ask, to enable us to navigate those similar challenges in a context that is extremely unequal and uneven. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. My name is Khanesu Sabata. I'm a film fellow from the first cohort. I wanted to ask a question on how are you keeping yourselves accountable as an organization, especially to the young people that you engage with and work with? Since accountability is actually sewn into the fabric of who you are as an organization, your name says it. How are you ensuring that programming is not just ticking boxes? We made a call, take the responses, take recent, and then people came, they learned, take. And also in the same breath, how are you ensuring that the young people that are a part of these programs, how are you ensuring that the things that they do are sustainable for their future? Because the thing that I do, my film, my singing, whatever it is I do, it's my livelihood in Zimbabwe. And so if I'm spending a full year concentrating on a topic, such as accountability, what then is there for me after the fact? After this year of me doing this particular program, how are you ensuring sustainability for the young people who are actually a part of the program?
Thank you. And these are all amazing questions. Thank you for asking them. Simba Rashid, good question about intergenerational challenges. When we first started the Accountability Lab, it was, we didn't, you know, we didn't have anything. We didn't have a team. We didn't have any money. I think one of the biggest challenges was trust. I'm sure you experienced this yourselves. No one trusts you because they don't know who you are. And we talked a little bit about that, building trust takes a long time. And so we really didn't get going for two or three years. It was very hard. We didn't have any money. And slowly, slowly, we began to build that trust that allowed us to grow a bit. That's related to the second challenge, I think, that we had, which is that we had lots of ideas that I think were too creative. And this gets to a point about intergenerational issues. Older generations, I don't want to generalize, but I think generally are less willing to embrace change. They tend to have been within systems for a long time. They don't want to change those systems too much. They're used to those systems. And in many cases, they may, you know, be punished if they try and change those systems. Whereas young people like yourselves are more creative, more networked, more willing to challenge the status quo in the system as it exists. And I think we were trying to do that as an organization and you are probably trying to do that yourselves. And so you get a bit of pushback. And that's hard. But again, I would say let's try and identify people within the system that understand this. They might not be willing to totally change the systems themselves, but at least they could be collaborators or allies or provide us with feedback. And try and build those relationships over time and begin to see what the objectives are for the change. Another big problem we faced was competition. Others thought that we were competitors, which is unfortunate because in civil society, we're not trying to make money, although we'll touch on the sustainability point in a minute. We are trying to change our societies. So we, as I mentioned, really try and embrace this idea of not being jealous and of collaborating with others and forgiving everybody credit. Because if we compete with each other, we're just going to tear everybody down. So we have to try and find a way to be as generous as we can with an understanding that hopefully that will come back around. And that is all part of building the relationships that we need. But technically, we had also tons of challenges. We didn't have money. We had to fundraise. We didn't have any systems. We had to build those systems. We didn't have any policies. We didn't have any offices. We didn't have any governance. We didn't have a board of directors. So we had to build all of those things. And part of what we're trying to do in the Accountability Lab is support those of you who are also building organizations or ideas to avoid all of the same mistakes. So for example, we put, I think, almost all of our policies and procedures on our website in Word documents so you can go in there and download them and adapt them for your purposes. Because it took us ages to develop those. What's the point in us keeping them secret and not giving them to other people? We're trying to outsource, you know, as much as we can. We're trying our best to tell your stories on social media and food campaigns and so on. So that's, you know, that's one piece of it. But if there's ever any other kinds of advice that you need on organizational startup, I'm very happy to talk about it. I can give you my WhatsApp number. There's a lot of resources out there on how you build a social enterprise or how you build an organization or how you build a movement, most of which is free now. So, you know, let's get together in rainstorm and try and find ways to help each other build the kinds of organizations that you're trying to build. But that comes to the second question about sustainability. And perhaps my Zimbabwean colleagues can talk more about that. But many of our film fellows and other participants in our programs, after they graduate, go on to do lots of related things, either in the media or, you know, voice to rep artists go into the arts and find a living in this sort of thing or work for other civil society organizations. And we try and facilitate that, whether it's through introductions or internships or other programs. But let us know what more we can do. I know it's a big commitment of your time and energy. I hope that the skills that you're learning are transferable and it's not just about accountability. It's also about many other different things that you will find helpful and useful as you move forward. And to the first point of your question, which was about our accountability, that's a big piece of it. We want to know whether we're helping and supporting you in the right kinds of ways or not. And if we're not, we really want to hear that because then we can change and adapt. We really don't want to be prescriptive and we don't want to tell you what it is that we think that you want or that we think you want to know. But to respond to what it is that you really need to build the kind of society that you want to live in and build the skills that you'd like to prosper within that society. And I hope we find in small ways, sometimes places where accountability and sustainability overlap. So that there might even be ways to make money out of being accountable. In theory, with Voice to Rep, if people begin to care about accountability issues, then in theory, accountability music would sell. I don't know whether that's currently the case or whether you can monetize, you know, some of your ideas or some of your content as it becomes more popular. But that's a conversation we should have. And there are some ideas that have come out of our incubator that have begun to make money. So it's not that sustainability and accountability are completely separate. They can overlap, but we would love to hear your ideas as to how to do that effectively.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nya Shad Dube. I'm a film fellow, CSU film fellow. So the issue of accountability in Zimbabwe, the way itself is not in many people, it sticks hard. Our leaders do not want to be accountable. That is a fact. And everything that you do in relation to accountability can turn political. And you can be in, you can, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna, in English, I'm just saying, politics can play you. You can get arrested, beaten up for bringing out issues of accountability. As a filmmaker and a journalist, sometimes you have an accountability issue and you fail to express it because you're afraid. Who's sitting next to me after talking outside the gate of taking a walk? So how have you been in your work for 10 years? Or what other countries are doing to protect its people? Maybe our film may offend someone in government and send a battalion of warakan here to me. So these are security concern issues. As a film, as a person who talks, who shows issues of accountability through film, even in music, so you have to jump other limits, knowing exactly you can be bitten in time. But we are trying to bridge the weight of accountability. And also thank you for the program of notifying and alerting people who do raise in government. But my issue is the issue of security for the work that we do. Thank you.
Salut, Bonjour. Mila kamalam, Moskva, Nidjulwe. I'm Socks. I'm a poet and a massive film fellow. And my question, rather, I don't know whether it's a commentary question. It's still confusing, debating within my head. For instance, like one thing that I've realized in terms of accountability, it's an ethical thing, right? And ethics cannot just be taught off a textbook, right? So one thing that I feel, so it's a suggestion. So in my head, I don't know whether it's something that works or something that is bizarre, but I feel like we need to function the same way that churches function, rather, when we're talking about accountability. If we create an accountability church, why am I saying so? Because issues of ethics, you can read about it, but there is more power in practice than it, right? So how, wait, what question? How, like, what kind of an approach can you adopt to sort of like one dumb down accountability? Because whenever you're talking about accountability to so many people, they understand the concept from the intellectual side, but not on the practice side. And I've met so many people who will tell you what I mean accountability, there's accountability that. But when you then trace what they are doing, they themselves do not understand what accountability is. Because it's a concept that has got so many woven parts and it's really heightened. It's not white because it's ethical, right? It's different from like principles of white natural, more whereby you say killing is bad, kissing is good, right? But it's something whereby you're now saying with it because there is a benefit. I don't know what to put this. Like for instance, you know with corruption, how in Zimbabwe, we've got so many cases of corruption, but you find that there is really no alternative in certain places, like in terms of corruption. You can't get a license unless if you're pride, right? So my question is, how do we then inculcate those principles of accountability to other generations that are already there and become generations? And how do we dump down the conversation to make people really understand what it is and its importance? That's where I think my question is.
These are really tough questions. You guys are putting in the hot seats. And I also think you have better answers to them than I do, probably, because you're the ones that are living these things on a daily basis. Accountability, I agree, can mean a lot of different things to lots of different people. And in all of the places we work, if we ask that question, we get a different answer when we ask what is accountability? You know, I have a certain perspective on this, but in your communities and your society, there are probably other different ones. You know, you talked about paying a bribe or taking a bribe, for example. I might say that that is not being accountable. But if a government official is taking that in order to pay for food for their family, in some way, they are being accountable to their family because that's what they have to do, right? But according to maybe my Western conception of accountability, that, you know, I would say that isn't accountable. So it varies, and I think we need to understand it not as a moral or individual judgment as much as a systemic issue. There are systems of corruption. There are systems of opacity or lack of transparency in which there are incentives that dictate how people act. So prosecuting one person for doing bad things, in my opinion, isn't going to change the system. Because if it's a systemic problem, if you take one person out, the next person that comes in is just going to engage in the same behaviors. So again, that doesn't mean that people should not be held to account or should not be prosecuted for breaking the law. But I don't think that's what's going to solve our problems. Which gets to your point about this being about ethics and values. Because in the end, we need to build societies in which we all believe that being honest is the right thing to do, not because there is a law that says you need to be honest. So it needs to align with our personal incentives, our personal values. And that maybe is how we can shift in the right direction. So how do we do that? That's really difficult. But it's part of what we're doing here tonight, perhaps. You know, we're talking about this. We're, you know, through the programs that you are part on, we are thinking about our values. We had a good discussion with our team earlier about values and how we need to live by our values. Because as you pointed out, we are all about accountability and that is absolutely essential. I think it comes in many cases to education, which maybe is a whole other big conversation for us to get into, particularly civic education. It comes to religion. It comes to the way that families interact and the role models that parents are setting for their children. There's all sorts of very complex and related. There's all sorts of very complex and related parts of, of this whole that help build a values-based society. And there's only small pieces of it that we can all work on, but, but I think that is where a lot of the work needs to happen. It doesn't mean that, that some of the courageous people who are, who are journalists or civic activists who are pointing out some of the problems are, are not doing really important things. But it, but it means that there is another part of what needs to happen, which is about some of the softer values and ethics and integrity issues. Personally, I think accountability is, the word in English has an element of responsibility in it. It's, it's about being responsible for, for what you say you will do. It's not just about transparency. Being transparent and being open is really important, but that, it's more than that. It's about, it's about being open, but also following through on whatever it is that you have the authority to do or that you have said that you will do. And that then builds, as we discussed, trust and feedback loops over time that that can help reinforce accountability. But as we all know, it, it can take a long time to build that loop of accountability and it can take one second for it to all come crashing down, you know, one, one promise that is broken, one bribe that is paid, you know, one, one mistreatment of, of somebody after years of being kind can totally undermine credibility, so. So it's, it has to be something personal because this isn't just about what your organization does. It's about who you are and really trying to understand that. In terms of the point about security, again, I, I think you probably know better than I do how to stay safe in this particular context. There are lots of tools out there that can help with this, digital security tools, for example, that can help you share information of securely political economy or kind of analysis tools that can help you understand, you know, what's, what's going on. But you probably have your, your ear quite close to the ground and you know what, what topics might cause trouble and what, which ones may, may not, or how to approach them or in which places to approach them. And, and I'm sure our team are happy to chat at any point about messaging or, or ways of engaging around some of these kinds of issues to try and stay secure. But again, I come back at some level to, to, to how we approach these sorts of issues. Are, are there creative ways to do it that, that are positive, that, that won't necessarily lead to any kind of reaction? Or are there topics that are, that you can see consensus falling around that are not overly political? Somehow, everything is political one way or another, I know. But, but perhaps it's trash collection, for example, in a particular community. Maybe that is less political than directly going, going to talk about the budgets or about gender issues or, or something that might begin to threaten people one way or another. I don't know what those issues are in your case or in in the particular places and spaces that you're working, but, but I suppose a lot of this is about, about being intelligent, about how you engage. And then I, I think there's, there are many international resources that you can draw on and we can share a list of these. For frontline defenders and for people that are protecting human rights and pushing for, for change in, in different ways, there are small, small grants to help you with your work. Safety and security mechanisms, international networks that can, that can help with some of this stuff, connection to, to media outlets to amplify some of these issues and maybe provide some international advocacy or, or support in different ways. So I know it's, it's difficult and, and I empathize and just let us know what it is that you need and maybe we can find ways to help.
I'm going to take two final questions. Oh my god. So I know Rachel, you had a question. My mic will come back. And then who's got a really burning come through?
Hi. My name is Rachel. I had a question a little bit about the how, I guess. I think that we live in a society, especially as young people, where we're breaking off of our traditional values, so to speak. And it's a very sort of like, you know, wobbly setting where people are like, oh, do I really stick to what, you know, my parents went by or I see other people living like this and it seems to be working for them and like how, how then do we, or do you have any sort of practical ways if you dealt with maybe societies that sort of look like this where it's like, oh, you know, maybe a little bit of Western is creeping in or a little bit of this is creeping in and it's like, okay, so do we ride the wave of this to get the attention of, of, of the youth and, and start to impart certain values into them? Like, yeah, have you had any sort of instances like that? What are some practical ways that you went about it? Just so we do know, start thinking about those kinds of things. I hope that makes sense. Because I can usually talk speed, doesn't it?
Okay, thank you so much. So my question is actually directed to the accountability labs activities in general. Have you ever faced any scenario where by first a resistance or opposition from any government sector for addressing an accountability issue? Or resistance from any society due to maybe their cultural beliefs or their societal roles? Was there ever that situation?
Thank you. If I've understood correctly, the two connections, the two questions connect a little bit. We definitely work in places around the world where there's resistance to what we do. My wife Nadia, who's also here, and it's her first time in Zimbabwe and she's thoroughly enjoying your amazing hospitality. She's Pakistani and we lived in Pakistan for a long time and you may know the government in Pakistan is also very repressive and civic space is closing and and we've faced a number of, of issues either ourselves or, or people that we work with around these kinds of things. And we've also faced issues with, with sort of traditions or cultures that are a little bit, you know, different to some of the ways that we think about things or in ways that are difficult. For example, our integrity icon campaign there a few years ago, we, there was an amazing lady who had been nominated as an icon. But they have very strong gender cultural norms there in terms of the role of women and she, she wasn't allowed to participate in the video about the icons and, and that sort of thing because, well, she, she didn't feel like it was her role to play. I think it was a combination of the gender issue, but also not wanting to be made too prominent because that could lead to questions and challenges. So of course we, we didn't, you know, we didn't push her, her forward and we, we only generally, I, I hope, work with, with people that want to be part of our, our programs and, and, and want to push back against some of these kinds of, of issues. I think we've, in Pakistan, built very good relationships with the government now at all levels. So while we don't necessarily agree with everything they do, we have people that we can talk to about the issues. We have entry points for our programs at different levels. We've begun to look at specific sectors where we, like I mentioned, where we feel there might be room for for change to happen in, in different ways. So we're now beginning to look at the police, for example, where actually there is some interesting room for accountability. So these are challenges in other places. This, it's, it's not that, that they are unique. But I also understand that, that perhaps as young people, you're, you're not just bumping up against the larger political challenges, but also challenges with your, perhaps with your families or with conceptions of the roles that you should play in society and you perhaps having a different conception of that and of getting involved in the arts, for example, which perhaps older generations feel are not good way journey type of activities. But I think it's up to all of us to, to try and bridge that gap a little bit. Perhaps there are ways that you can bring traditional approaches to some of these problems into your work or build on those in ways that, that molds modernity and, and creativity with tradition one way or another. Maybe there's themes in your films that can pick up on, on deeper and historical understandings of the problems and, and try and flip, flip those understandings and make them modern or more relevant for the kinds of societies that we live in now. So that it doesn't seem completely divorced and new from everything that exists. But also it doesn't get pulled, pulled back into the structures that existed previously and that clearly are not necessarily creating the opportunities and the kind of change that you want to see. That might not be as concrete as you, as you wanted, but I wonder Sherry, Sheena or my Zimbabwean colleagues, whether you have thoughts on, on this? As people that have grown up in this context, how do you manage to balance tradition and perhaps, you know, some of what other people might want you to do versus this kind of work and the kind of change and creativity that's needed to create that, that change? It's a hard question.
It is. Come, come and talk to us about this.
Hi, my name is Atey. I think, I forgot that order to come to the front. How are you guys? So I just wanted to comment. I think it was a question around some of the cultural issues that potentially limit. And then I wanted to single out an incident that we had with our last recruitment. We were trying to get young women in a rural community. I can't remember where it was, but there are young women that were not allowed to go to the place where we're doing auditions. And one of the partners that we're working with in that particular community was raising this concern that a lot of the parents perceive the odds, like if a young girl is going to spaces where people are singing or dancing or whatever, there is this attachment to the, to the idea that she's being rebellious. I don't want to use the word slut, but that's how they perceive those kind of young women. So that this young woman that the partner knew had so much potential to be a part of the Voice to Rep program, but then they couldn't come to the place to audition and they didn't actually audition for this current court. So one of the things that they were proposing should be done is to just take advantage of this year to sensitize, instead of just targeting the young women, but also find ways of targeting the parents as well. So that we begin to have these conversations where parents begin to understand what we're trying to do. But also use like the alumni that we have, especially the young women from communities that are similar to them to say, this is an example of a young woman that started off like this, one young woman, and this is the kind of impact she's having, this is the kind of growth and opportunities that are coming up. So that for me was one example that I felt had a lot to do with cultural perceptions or social norms about what women, young women can do or should I do, yeah?
Hi, thank you. I come from a rural area. I live and work within a very patriarchal society. And I found that when we work with the young people, including them within the programming, like if you watch my film, everyone who helped was a young person from the rural community. The young women who, who were in the film were the young women who are within the community. And so when another young female is then watching that, they can relate and they can aspire to also be the same. So that's a way that we can also integrate it into our programming that instead of telling them, no, do this in this way, include them. And then that way they see themselves in the eyes of whatever they're seeing on screen or hearing on the radio.
Hi, Laou. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I was so quiet. My mother always tells me that when you've got something burning inside of you, you have to say it out. And I just kept quiet, but now I'm starting to realize that what was burning inside, inside of me is something that I was supposed to say. So my name is Jackie. I come from Zunina and it's a, it's a rural area. And I was one of the contestants on 2021 Film Festival. And I did a documentary called, Little Hands, sorry. This mask is kind of killing me. Okay, thank you. I did a documentary called Little Hands. And I was, I faced a lot of difficulties in terms of talking with the kids because I was supposed to involve the parents. At the same time, I, I kind of like learned that I was supposed to involve the traditional leaders. So for, it's an advice, right, for everybody that wants to put the, the rural areas, wants to work with the rural areas, is that you have to speak with the leaders. The leaders, the traditional leaders, it's very important to talk to them first. Because it kind of helps for you to kind of bring in whatever you want to bring to them. Because for me, what, what, what happened was this. I wasn't supposed to go to the community without approaching the leaders first. I kind of got a very big uproar from, from the community. And at the end of the day, once the thing was done, all things were, were all done, I was able to work with the leaders. And into a point that now I'm still working with them and we're experiencing a lot of changes in terms of, of, of margin slavery that is, that is done on kids. So I think we have to work with the traditional leaders as well.
Well, my, 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 mine, my, mine was not a... Yeah, no, initially when I raised my hands, it was to, to respond to Blaise's invitation. But I'd, I'd, you know, I might take advantage and security of the people and ask a, you know, a tough question. No, you know, so the things that I wanted to say, and, 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 and I guess that's the value of the network, right? Some of the things that we think we can be able to profile as advice are not resident in Doian's, Timmerg's offices or so-called responsible authorities. As you can see from the advice from Jackie, the advice from Scar, a lot of that will reside within you as a network. So that encouragement to connect and share experiences and collaborate will take away some of the challenges that, that may appear to be there because what is a challenge to you might be a lived experience for someone else that they can be able to share and allow you to, 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 to benefit from that, that kind of experience. There's a saying that says, only of whom let's hope their own mistakes, those who are wise let them experience the mistakes of others. And I think that has the power of this thing. So let's, let's embrace that and then, and, and, and try to do that. There, there, there are a couple of interesting things that I, I think emerge. The, the, the question of security, I think is a very, very serious one. Especially in context of shrinking civic space, is that how we say it in the research? Shrinking civic space, especially in contexts like ours. But as Blaise, I think, elaborated, part of the challenge of creatives like yourselves. Because to all intents and purposes, almost everyone who is involved in our programming is a creative in their own right. Part of that, the challenge, is the challenge to better creativity, better innovation, a move away from orthodoxy. Because it is orthodoxy that the state knows how to correct on. Creativity and innovation, they dedicate up in a year or two. So part of the challenge really is to us to say, let us avoid the, 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 the path that is well, well, well tried in our approach to engaging with issues. in our approach to engaging with issues and the kinds of ideas and initiatives that they start. And I think that that may bring some measure of security. But if it doesn't, as Blair said, the vast amount of resources exist internationally, but also local. And I think that one of the things that we'll just try to do more broadly is to share some of those resources. I know that myself and Mantate have had conversations around protection of human rights defenders. It's a subject that we know of from practice, but also from engaging with other people. So if anyone is interested in information around what kind of protection mechanisms exist for human rights defenders, because at the end of the day, all the issues that we deal with are rights-related and some of you are a particular type of a human rights defender in some respect, please feel free to approach and we can share those particular questions. But yeah, there is wisdom in challenging yourselves to present initiatives and articulate issues in ways that keep us out of... Then just lastly, the issues, I think Jackie's submission. At the end of the day, I think it also depends on the issue that you're working on. So depending on the issue that you're working on, there are certain ethical and safe conditions that we need to take into consideration. So definitely, when you're working with children, there are certain measures that you need to take, certain ethical criteria that you need to acquire. But at the end of the day, I think I'll just end with Scar's advice. You know, if you, if it is about me, you know, we were talking about this last week at our charity chat. And I think the popular refrain is nothing for me without him. So there's really nothing that you can say you're doing for the community without meaningful community involvement. If it's going to need to involve parents, if you want to talk to parents, involve those people in the conceptualization process. Part of what we try to do at Accountability Lab is to change the way we do development. We want to move away from this approach where people in jackets and striped shirts, parachuting to communities and say they want to do something for those particular communities. The best approach is always to promote that talent, which is resident in communities and allow communities to have their own identity and voice. If you can be able to facilitate that, I think that that would be great. It's a responsibility that lies on both us as an organization, Accountability Lab, but also yourselves as community champions in various respects of communities of place, communities of specialization and communities of open access defense.
So I think that's a good place to end on, right? But it's not over, right? So we're going to invite you to come and rub shoulders with us and hug and then chit chat and all that nice stuff in a little bit. Blair is going to give us a final remarks. And I invite you all to take the time and opportunity to engage with Sheena and Sherry and McDonald and all of the people who are with the lab today and ask them all of the questions. But more than that, I really invite you to connect with each other because the value you have, as Blair said earlier, is in each other and the network of really amazing people in this room who you have the potential to collaborate with and connect with and talk to and exchange ideas with yourself.
Thank you, Yebeni. Thanks, McDonald's. And thank you, everyone. I wanted to end with one final story that just touches on this conversation we were just having about gender and gender roles and what we're trying to do through some of this work, which I told to our team earlier. And it's one of our integrity icons in Pakistan, who is a Navy called Batul, who lives in a very patriarchal, conservative part of the country where women unfortunately have to live a very restricted lives. But she managed to become one of the first district officers within the local government in that province. And she became one of our integrity icons and we made a film about her. And she, since then, has done many excellent things, is supporting women in all sorts of ways, went to graduate school, has come back. And now there are 11 female district officers in her province when she was the only one three years ago. And it's, and we've talked to them and a number of them say it's exactly because they saw this video of her and they were inspired, not only as women, to understand that they could be part of decision-making and to play a different role, but also that they could have integrity, they could maintain their values and still be part of the government. So the program is literally changing the face of government in that province, which is happening quite quickly and over time will, of course, have a gigantic effect on how decisions are made because we all know that having more women in positions of power is generally good for everyone and creates more fair, equal societies. And in some ways, that also relates to everything that all of you are doing. The more the people, other people, see you doing what you're doing, the more they see the films that you're producing and the songs that you're creating, the more they will feel inspired to do the same thing and to be part of this change and part of this movement. And people are looking up to you. It is almost definitely happening. And I'm sure if we went to your communities and said, what do you think of what you're doing? People would say, it's inspiring. It's helping me understand that change is possible. It's filling me with hope for a different future. And so you are leading all of this and we are cheerleading and supporting you. And that's our role. So as we pointed out, just let us know how we can do that better and what kind of support you need and then work together and support each other to create this change. So thank you again. It's amazing to be here. I'm around and we are all here to brainstorm further and to keep pushing this forwards for another 10 years with all of you. And so we look forward to it and thanks again.
Just a final point. Do we have anybody from Atoos here?
From Atoos?
Yes, Atoos. Right. These two people, do you mind standing up? So Atoos recently won a Frontline Human Rights Defenders Award, right? Am I correct? Yes. So please... So with regards to the questions around security concerns, please take some time, you see the people, you know them now? Please take some time to find them and ask them about what we can do together, okay? Okay. Please take a seat, thank you. Now I'm going to invite a Koskola DBT, DBT, to come up and give us our vote of thanks.
Thank you so much, Opey. Blair, do you mind if I sit next to you? I know that generally here, you can do your job. Thank you so much. It's good to sit next to you, Blair. I'm Koskola DBT colleagues from the 2020 to 2021 Accountability Lab code. So when I'm thinking about Blair sitting right next to me, I'm thinking about the numerous emails that he shares, opportunities that you can tap into. And I would like to confirm with you, Blair, three or four of our colleagues in our cohort actually got a grant from the opportunities that you shared and they were break me to us. They were break me to us about the opportunities. They're like, I got a grant. I say, how? They say, but Blair shared the opportunity with all of us. Some of us applied and we know we got the grant. Would like to thank, you know, the Accountability Lab. It's good 10 years. Congratulations on that. And we are beneficiaries of the hard work that the lab has put up. And we hope that will also contribute immensely towards, you know, the Accountability Lab family. But one thing that strikes the most is we have got a WhatsApp group. I don't know about the other cohorts, right? But in our cohort, we have a WhatsApp group. But it has become a safe space for us to share our victories and successes. Right now, as I speak to you, one of our colleagues is going to Germany and the other one is going to the United States of America. And it's a space where we celebrate each other. The small things that you achieve, you put on there, you get people relating, calling you, congratulations, comrade, you have done so well. It's not as safe as it is even online. Just to share that I bought a new shoe on Instagram. Some people can hate you for that. But we are really born from this network and learning from each other and also sharing ideas. I think at some point, we network with other people from the Film Fellowship, you know, Voice to Rep. I'm not into art. I can't sing. But if I know someone who can sing from the network, it's easier when we're just connecting the dots while not starting from scratch. But most importantly, the new narratives, that's something that I've tried, talking about something different. You know, our TLs, our timelines on social media are so depressing, actually, in Zimbabwe, if you check. What's trending is depressing news all the time. Then thinking about new narratives, you are actually beginning to reflect differently about doing the same thing, but in a different way. This is what Accountability Lab has done for us. And I think colleagues here in this room can attest to that. I know the account of renewals will come and teach you some more things, yeah? Since you are your elders. I'm joking, but it has brought us a new, you know, fresh space. But most importantly, we have been fled out there through Accountability Lab's social media accounts. It feels so good to be named an account of renewal, top 12 young people doing amazing work. You are like, yeah. It boosts your confidence in the initiative that you're doing. It boosts your energy around, you know, the possibilities that are there, looking at the network that we are in, different countries that are doing really amazing stuff. And colleagues, there's this other market play that you mentioned. We should be downloading policies for our organizations at the Accountability Lab website for free. We can do a round of applause for that. You know, Cosartes in Zimbabwe charged $2,000 US dollars for an HR policy. So if the policies are there and we feel there are others that are not on the site, who request that and upload it for us as a resource. But Accountability Lab has become a resource. It's become a family. We really appreciate. And thanks to you and the entire team. The Zimbabwe team will always meet and, you know, engage on different platforms. But we really appreciate you and your time to meet us all here. I know it's not easy to bring some of us who are coming from very far away, but we really treasure this and we thank you so much. Please continue sending those opportunities. We see them. We are taking advantage of them. And it also broadens our thinking around, you know, different things and different topics that are relevant to our work contextually and also relevant to us as young people. We have the energy. I see energy in this room and we really appreciate. Thank you. I'm not so sure, Opey, should I stand up or?
Okay, everyone, that's so program. But I do want to take a group photo of everybody with Blair. So what we're going to do is we're going to have, I'm going to move this table and then you come and just make, put yourself somewhere. Is that okay? Right, come and put yourself somewhere.